If not, Deacon Corky Welch will give our invocation and also lead us in the place of the flag, but everyone please rise.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, let us pray. Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening, and we thank you for this group of men and women that have gathered here this evening to partake about the business of running the city of Smyrna. We just ask that you be with us in each and every decision here that's made this evening, that it will be something that will further your name in the city. We ask that you be with us as we make these decisions, and Lord, we just ask that you open our hearts and help us to understand that these decisions are for every citizen in the city. In your name we pray this evening, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the, second, number two is agenda changes, and we do not have any. Item three is, no, we're not going to add to it, it's not dated. Mayor's report, it's item three, and we have a proclamation, 2014-065, proclamation on Honor of Patriots' Day, April 19th, 2014. And I think there's somebody, or a couple of guys out here, that look like they just got off a horse or something, and that they've been here before. I'm going to ask Corky Welsh to read the proclamation, also introduce these guys. Y'all can come on up, y'all okay, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe I have a Wayne Brown and Larry, if I mess this up, Larry Guzzi. I'm going to read the proclamation from here, and I'll come down and present it to you. City of Smyrna, a proclamation by the mayor and the city of Smyrna for Patriots' Day, whereas April 19th marks the date in 1775 when the towns of Lexington and Concord, Massachusetts, were marched upon by British regulars in an effort to confiscate munitions of the local militia, and whereas the resulting shot heard around the world and the defeat of the redcoats are now celebrated as Patriots' Day. And whereas on April 19th, 1778, Colonel Samuel Albert, commanding three Georgia Navy galleys, Lee, Washington, and Bullock, encountered three British ships in the Frederica River near St. Simon's Island, and whereas after five hours of naval action, the British ships were captured by Colonel Albert and the Georgia Navy, a victory which boosted the morale of all Georgia patriots and caused the British to delay their invasion of Georgia by more than eight months. And whereas Patriots' Day serves to remind citizens of the revolution and the sacrifices enduring, endured during the years of struggle for American independence by patriots such as Captain John Collins, and whereas the descendants of the soldiers who fought in the American Revolution encouraged the community to proclaim April 19th of each year Patriots' Day in commemoration of the American Revolution and the struggle for American independence. Now therefore, I, A. Max Bacon, Mayor of Smyrna, Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby proclaim April 19th, 2014, as Patriots' Day, and urge all residents to become more knowledgeable of the role which the Revolutionary War played in establishing the United States of America. In witness whereof, I have heretofore presented my hand and caused the seal of the city of Smyrna to be affixed upon this the seventh day of April in the year of the Lord 2014. A. Max Bacon.
You guys, once he presents this, y'all, anything y'all would like to say? Y'all age very well, after being here this whole time.
Just good living.
Please, y'all, tell us, any statement you'd like to make, or tell us anything about anything.
Well, actually, the, it's interesting because the Navy was not actually a factor in the 1778, April 19th, that, it was the Army. So what we like to say is that the Army actually captured Navy ships, so it was even a bigger... Yeah. But we, as members of the Sons of the American Revolution, have a patriot that served or supported the American Revolution, even if we only have one somewhere along the way. Most people in Georgia actually could find a patriot themselves, and we attempt to help people do that. We look forward to being here in the city of Smyrna, as we all, we have very many members who live here, including Charles Schweitzer, whose name is Adorns the Library, he's a member of our chapter.
As a matter of fact, my mother, I think, joined the Women of the Something.
D.A.R.
Yeah, and my mother, I hope she doesn't mind telling her age, but she'll be 93 in September.
Wow.
Went back to the house, she had to have her marriage certificate in order for her to, she knew exactly where it was at.
Well, you would be eligible for sure, and I do help people. I'm working on Mayor Jenkins, Jerkins of Ossdale.
Well, good.
You would call.
Thank you very much for coming.
I'd love to help you someday.
Thank y'all.
I know we have one candidate here that's running for school board, Susan Thayer. Susan, you want to come up? I'll give you just a couple of minutes. I'll tell you the way to do it, if you get long-winded, you'd probably lose votes, and if you just get straight to the point, you get votes.
Are you speaking from experience?
Yes.
I am Susan Thayer. I'm running for school board, representing Smyrna and part of Mapleton. I have lived in the Smyrna area for 30 years. I've been a businesswoman, I have over 30 years' experience in education. I was principal at Pebblebrook, I've been a classroom teacher, I was counselor at Osburn, one of the schools in this district, and when I was in the central office in Cobb County as executive director of high schools, we wrote the grant and got the funding for the IB program at Campbell, and we advocated that that program be established at that school. So I've had a vested interest in this area for a long time, and I hope that you will give me your consideration to vote on May the 20th. Even if you don't have children in schools, there's no better investment in our future than in education, so we would appreciate your support on that. Thank you, Mayor.
A very short window. It's, you qualified when, a couple of weeks ago, and then this election's in May.
Not long ago, right. And then the early voting is even at the end of April.
Yeah.
So you can get absentee ballots now, or vote early, or, but please at least be sure that you have voted by May the 20th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that I don't recognize out there that's, that's something I would never run for as a school board, just because I can't figure it out, and, okay. Item four is land issues, only is annexation, we have none. Item five is private licenses, we do not have any. Item six is formal business. A is ordinance 2014-05, approve the amendment to the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102, entitled Utilities, Article 1, Section 102-7, water and sewer rates and reconnect fees. Mr. Taylor.
Before we do that, I need to recuse myself because of a possible conflict of interest, so at this time I am going to step down.
Mr. Taylor, in the background, please.
Mr. Mayor, staff has reviewed our water rates ordinance and has determined that the way that the rate is calculated as far as base rate goes should be actually clarified in our ordinance to avoid any kind of confusion, and so we're actually putting forward the following modification. It will read, "Base rates shall be calculated solely by the meter size, as adopted by the mayor and council, schedules of which are on file in the city clerk's office. In no circumstance shall the number of residential or commercial units be a factor in determining the base rate. Base rate is a license fee to access and utilize the water system." This has gone under review by staff and our city attorney, and we do recommend approval.
This, under Ms. Terry Nudlewich's committee, is Finance Administration, but I'll ask Mr. Welsh if he'll take care of that.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any real questions on this issue. I don't think we need any further introduction of it. With that being said, I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102, entitled Utilities, Article 1, Section 102-7, water and sewer rates and reconnect fees.
Motion second. Any other discussion? Ms. Nudlewich just appeared, which is good, so, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved, six to zero, and one recused himself. Thank you very much. If you, somebody want to get Ms. Bluestein? Seven is commercial building permits, we have none. Eight is consent agenda. Mr. Taylor, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. We have a very quick consent agenda this evening. Item A is an approval to the March 17th, 2014, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B is an approval to use the council chambers on April 17th, 2014, from 6:30 p.m. until 9 o'clock p.m. for the Vining's Forest Annual HOA Meeting. Item C is an approval for the use of council chambers by the American Planning Association, Sunday, April 27th, 2014, 11 a.m. into 2 p.m. And item D is to approve ordinance 2014-06, which is for the Georgia Municipal Employees' Benefit System Defined Benefit, let me try that again, Georgia Municipal Employees' Benefit System Defined Retirement Plan. This matter was approved at the January 21st, 2014, and February 3rd, 2014, mayor and council meetings, and this ordinance will actually effectuate this agreement.
Your motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved, seven to zero. Item nine is committee reports, we'll start tonight, Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The police have been a little busy, but they are efficient in what they do. They're working with Cobb County on solving a missing persons case that I think we will be able to announce tomorrow resolution, if not later today. Also, upcoming on April 21st, two weeks from today, 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. at the Chick-fil-A on South Cobb Drive, is Coffee with a Cop. It's an opportunity for our community to get together on a one-on-one basis and be more familiar with what our men and women in blue are doing, and get to know them better. I highly recommend that opportunity. We did one recently, and it was well-attended and well-received. Chief Lee has been dedicated to getting the community and the police department very familiar with one another, and I highly recommend that. Chief Day continues to bring us new opportunities. We're going to have some opportunity in a couple of weeks to discuss a couple of items, but I do appreciate what our fire department is doing as well. One last item, just wanted to comment on a couple of events that we had in the community in this past few days. First, Art in the Park. I thought the community, our arts and culture community in Smyrna was not just well-represented, but outstanding examples of what they do and how we need to show appreciation. I commend the staff that helped put that together, and the citizens who came and took advantage of the opportunity to celebrate the arts in Smyrna, and we want to make that a recurring celebration, and I'm excited about that. And the second, I had the privilege to join the mayor and another member of council, Mr. Welsh, at the grand reopening of the Wade Ford facility, spent close to $3 million on renovating the facility. The Ford Motor Company is very proud to be in Smyrna, Georgia, so much so that a member of the Ford family and the CEO of the company came to celebrate the grand reopening. It was an outstanding event, and it was another testament, I think, to not just what local city of Smyrna folks have as a sense of pride, but a good place to do business, and I think the fact that since the 80s Ford Motor Company has found it important to locate a facility in Smyrna, and that we've worked hard to try to make sure they stay here, and with this renovation and this commitment, it's obvious they're going to be here for a long time. I want to applaud Steve Ewing and his team at Wade Ford for what they did in the renovation, but also the commitment that Ford Motor Company has expressed as confidence in he and his team in Smyrna, Georgia, and I was just proud to be a part of the event. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
One more thing, I think the Art in the Park is still going on through this week, I think, and it goes through, is it Friday or Saturday?
Sunday.
Sunday. And it's really, it's at the Bronner-Taylor House, and it's really some neat stuff, got some very talented folks, and, see, I was there Friday night, I think, so, yeah. And one thing that I read, Meredith Romali, a detective, was named by the governor for some kind of task force.
Child welfare.
Yeah, I read that somewhere, so, it's a great deal. Mr. Wade Lineker.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank the citizens of Ward Six for inviting me to several HOA meetings on May, or, excuse me, March 19th. I met with the Oak Ridge Estates Homeowners Association, hosted their annual meeting. Appreciated having the chance to see those citizens and answer their questions and attend their meeting. Yesterday, April 6th, I met with the Vining's Glen Homeowners Board and talked with them. Again, appreciated being invited to that meeting. As has been mentioned, there have been a number of events since our last meeting mid-March. One of the ones that I enjoyed attending was on March 26th at Taylor-Bronner Park, where we had the dedication of the Sharon Darby Healing Garden. Sharon Darby is a former, now deceased Smyrna resident. She owned a business in Smyrna, was very active in the community during her life, loved being part of the Smyrna community, was president of the Smyrna Business Association, very involved in that organization. She gave back a lot to her community through her business. I know when the city needed plaques and awards, she always offered kind of discounted pricing. She never made much money off any business she did with the city, and that was true for a number of organizations. If she supported them with her heart, then she supported them with their business, and, you know, she wasn't a rich woman, but she led with her heart and did all, a lot of things to help the community and help the people in the community that I doubt many people today even truly understand how much she did. Well, when she passed away from cancer a few years ago, she left in her will a bequest that her estate, when it was kind of finalized, be used to do something for her community, where she, she loved being a part of it, and those funds were put together by some friends of hers, and the idea which was brought to the city was to create a garden behind Bronner Hall at Taylor-Bronner Park. And that was dedicated on Wednesday, March 26th. It's a beautiful spot, it took kind of an unused corner of the parkland behind the building, and it was very nicely landscaped, trees and shrubs and flowers planted in there. Again, it's just, it was just kind of a corner of the park, which is beautiful all in itself, but now it's really something special, and it's a lasting legacy to her memory. It says, "With her last wishes," how much she loved the community and how important it was to her that the last of her physical assets be used to enhance that community. Ladies and gentlemen, there's no way you can buy that kind of love and dedication for your community, for your organizations. I was proud to have known Sharon Darby, I think a number of us up here did, and in the audience, and every day when we're at Taylor-Bronner Park, we'll have a physical reminder of her love for the city of Smyrna, and it was an honor to be invited to that dedication, and I want to thank her and all of her friends and family that made that possible. I think Sharon would be very proud of that, in fact, I know she is. Finally, we approved on the consent agenda tonight, use of these chambers for the Vining's Forest Annual HOA Meeting on April 17th. I look forward to seeing those residents and participating with them. With that, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank the citizens of Ward Five that came out to the community meeting that I hosted at the Wolf Center on March 29th. It was kind of, started out kind of a nasty day, and I want to thank the citizens that made the effort to come out. It was a good meeting, and I want to also thank Chief Lee and Chief Day for coming out and answering all the questions that the citizens had. I think they were very happy with being able to ask the questions and get answers. And I also want to thank my guest speaker that came, Dr. Bill Marchionne, who gave us a brief presentation about the history of Smyrna, and also talked a little bit about the neighborhoods of Ward Five that were, are part of the history of Smyrna. And so also, I'd like to let everyone know about the Flashlight Easter Egg Hunt that's going to be taking place this Saturday, April 12th, at the Tulison Park, and that event is, let's see, it's, it's, well, I'm sorry, I've got the wrong event open on the calendar here, I hit something else, but anyway, it's Flashlight Easter Egg Hunt and Movie by Moonlight this Saturday, April 12th, and it's at 7:00 p.m. to 9:30. And I think there is also a way to register for that event online, and Steve would like to encourage people to register if they can. And with that, I yield. Thanks.
Ms. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo Ron's sentiments regarding the Wade Ford Grand Reopening. It was a great event, and it was definitely a first-class event for a car dealership opening. Also, I attended the Art in the Park, and if you haven't gone and spent, in an hour, you can go through and visit everybody there and see all the art that's there, but it's a, it's a great, great contribution to the city of Smyrna. It's just a, you know, a pleasure to go down there and see all the talents that we have, and just ask everybody to go attend one night this week if they can. That's all, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Ms. Terry Nudlewich.
Thank you very much. I actually want to take a moment to commend the 47 city employees who have signed up through the wellness program that we have here for the Couch to 5K program. They're going to be participating in the Jonquill Jog, which is on Saturday, April 26th. It starts here, right in front of the Market Village, but I think that speaks a lot when we have, we have, you know, that's a, we have around 400 employees, and that's a rough estimate, and that's a decent percentage of our employees, and they're really making a commitment to improve their health, and I think that they should be commended, and so I wanted to recognize those folks. Again, the Jonquill Jog is going to be on April 26th, that's a Saturday, and it is also the weekend of the Spring Jonquill Festival. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Andrew Bluestein.
I wanted to remind Ward Two that on April 30th, I'm having a Ward Two meeting from 6:30 to 8:30 at Taylor-Bronner Hall, and if you have the evening free, I'd love for you to come. I have some people lined up to speak that I think you'll enjoy. Also, Two, we've got two holidays coming up, Passover and Easter, so I hope you have time to spend some time with your families and enjoy the holidays. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'm really happy to announce that our visioning process is going full force. We will have our kickoff on Monday, the 14th, this coming Monday, at 8 o'clock at the Wolf Center. We have between 225 and 250 citizens in the city of Smyrna who are participating in this. Now, that means that there are the 52,000 people that can also participate, because we're going to be doing an online survey, and we'll have people at the Jonquill Festival that you can talk to about this as well, but it's really exciting, it's citizens in the city of Smyrna who are going to give their ideas and their input on how we can make Smyrna a better place, what our citizens would like to see over the next 10 years. And then from all of that, we will come away probably in October, because we have six meetings, steering committee meetings, we have about 15 focus groups, maybe 11 focus groups, Terry, is that right? 11 or 15, somewhere in that range of 15 to 20 people each in those groups, and they will all be meeting. So we're going to have a lot of meetings going on, a lot of information is going to be floating around. On Monday, at the kickoff, we will announce the website that you can go to, where you can register and do your survey, or give input, or ask questions, or make comments. So we want to encourage everybody to have a say in this, if you're so inclined to do that, because it's a very important event, and I want to thank the committee, which is Terry, Ron, Eric, Jennifer Bennett, Ken Sudreth, and the Market Street people that we're working with. Secondly, I just attended a ribbon cutting for a new business in Smyrna over by the Best Buy. It's called Revive Consignment, and it's one of the neatest consignment stores I've been in in a long time. They have household products, they have furniture, they have clothing for children, men and women. So if you just want to browse through a consignment shop, I think you will enjoy that, and it's called Revive, and it's in the Best Buy shopping center of where Skellini's is. And I think that is everything I have, and we are definitely looking forward to our visioning process and getting starting on Monday. With that, I yield.
Ms. Eric Taylor.
Scott Cochran. Terry Graham. We have, well, we have no showcase hearing, we've got citizens' input, we've got a couple of folks signed up for that. Kirby Sigling, is that the way you pronounce it? 1526 Wedgemore Court, Home Energy Audits Through Georgia Power. Yeah, come on up. Don't be afraid.
No, this is the first time I've ever done anything like this, so, yes, my name is Kirby Siglin. I've been a Smyrna resident for about 12 years now. Just recently started a small business in town called Greensweep Energy Audits, I'm the owner of it, and I work in compliance with Georgia Power, and what we do is go in and help residents save money on their power bills, because nobody likes a big power bill, and last year I did about 10% of the entire state of Georgia's energy audits that were performed. So I'm trying to increase those numbers, and I think it's critical to get in with as many citizens as possible of the city of Smyrna, since most of them are Georgia Power customers. There's just so much money to be saved, whether it's heating, lighting, appliances, whatever it may be, just getting the word out, because every time I talk to somebody who owns a house in town and present them with this program, they basically have had no idea about it, and we could blame a lot of that on Georgia Power, because they haven't advertised a whole lot. They're just starting to ramp up. This year, they want to do six times as many audits that were done last year, so, and they just told us this March 1st. So I'm just out here trying to improve people's comfort in their homes, and also get those energy bills down, and really improve the business here, and just use the city of Smyrna somehow, and getting the word out, so we can get people to save money. It's generally, for each audit, it depends on the size of the house, it can be between $200 to $400 for the audit, but Georgia Power pays that back within four to six weeks. They'll send you a check in the mail for that audit. And not only that, if you decide to do any of the upgrades to the home, you can get 50% of that expense up to $2,000. So if you spend $4,000 on insulation on your attic, you can get $2,000 of that back through Georgia Power, and they're very good with getting their checks back and getting your report of how your house performs, so they're really looking for a big push, and hopefully we can, we can get things going here. And I have plenty of flyers, if anybody's interested. Thank you.
So how, I mean, so if somebody wants to do that, how do they do it?
They can call me, I have my information, my number's 404-606-8011. It's Greensweep Energy Audits. Once again, my name is Kirby Siglin. I am on the approved contractor list on the Georgia Power website. You have to look for the BPI Assessment. BPI is the Building Processes Institute, it's what I got certified through. So they have free energy audits through Home, through Home Depot, through Georgia Power, but the next step is to get the whole home assessment, where I do measurements of your water heater, attic insulation levels, crawl space, I test all your gas lines, too, if you have natural gas lines, so.
Can you give that number?
Sure, it's for... Sure, it's 404-606-8011. Kirby Siglin, Greensweep Energy Audits.
Bill Mathis, 1599 Roswell Street, Water.
Roundhog Day number four. Croy Engineering, they did come out and do mischief, and I called, they will not talk. They will not get back to me. There's so much surveying tape, it looks like a gay pride event or something, you know? And this has been going on a long time, and anybody that'll come out from the city, from Croy Engineering, I'll take them down in that ditch and show them where the pipe comes from across the street. Nobody would listen, except this David England, and that only happened about a month ago. And they've since came and cleaned it out. But with all the money that's been wasted studying cameras, whatever, they could have spent it cleaning out the ditch that they stopped up. It's not on my property, it's on my neighbor's property, and that would cure this problem. There's not enough drop between Roswell Street to Hawthorne to put a pipe in. Now, I'm no engineer, and but I can go and look at it, and I just want somebody to tell me what they're going to do. I'd like for them to clean that ditch out, and we would not have the problem that you're flooding me in the backyard. Somebody could do something about it, and I would appreciate it. I'd appreciate some communication from Croy, that I've called four times and they won't get back. So, you know, who's paying them? You?
Me?
Yeah.
Bill, the last thing I heard was that they were, they had figured out what the problem was, they were going to fix it, and that's all.
Well, last time I talked, well, I did talk to somebody on the 4th.
Yeah.
But on the 5th of April, they said they would let me know something in 10 days. So I guess fries are ready again.
So they got a few, they got to the 15th?
No, it's past that.
Oh, I thought you said 10 days to the 5th.
But then they came out and said it'd be another four weeks. I'd know what they're going to do.
Right.
Could you prod them a little bit?
Get a, get a who?
Could you prod them a little bit?
I'll call them first thing tomorrow, unless Terry's, I mean, I'd be glad to call them, they're usually here. I don't know what they're...
Okay. But they've been out four or five times.
I'll call them in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's the last person to sign up for citizens' input, unless there's any other business we brought for this body. I'd trade this meeting adjourned, looks like about 8:05. Time to go home and watch the finals of the NCAA. We adjourn.